This is as good as it's gonna get. So we're ready to start. David, we already said? This is as good as it's gonna get. Good evening all and welcome to the March 20th regular meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. As always, our first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a somewhat truncated board tonight, but that's okay because we have a somewhat truncated agenda too. So we'll be efficient with everyone's time. And the first order of business is superintendent's remarks.
Yes, good evening Garrison. It's so nice to see you. Welcome. Just a few reminders and informational pieces. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, April 10th, and that is our first presentation around district priorities. It'll be around literacy. Words of advice, our consultants who have been with us in the last couple of years will be here to describe their work and the support that they've been providing our students. Debbie Earl is our subcommittee task force leader, and she's gonna be facilitating that presentation with her team of teachers, Lauren and Julie. So please come out. That's sort of the first series of our district priorities. We'll also have technology and social emotional presentation as well going into April. So please come and inform yourselves about what's going on in our district. I wanted to give you a little update. On our substitute list, at our last board meeting, we increased the daily rate for certified teachers to $100. So it was at $85 to $100. And uncertified remain at 85. Just got a thumbs up from the crowd out there. So we sent out a canvas letter, again, to those who are applicants on our OLAS, which is sort of our tool to find candidates. And so we had a few interviews, and tonight you'll see on the agenda that we have identified one certified teacher that will join us, one who has pending certifications, she's gonna join us, and then an uncertified teacher who we think is a fine match with us. So we're growing our list and strengthening. So thank you to the board for your recommendation, as well as allowing for us to increase the daily rate. We have, I don't know if you remember, we've been talking about the cabin in the forest for a number of months. It's a Boy Scout cabin that I believe, there are a few stories of how, who, what, where, and how it was built, but I believe it was built in the 70s by a troop here in Phillips Town. And so they approached the district and said, "We'd like to revitalize it and open it up to the community." So what we had to do is we had to create an agreement between the Boy Scouts and the district. So we just sent the Boy Scouts out, the agreement out to the Boy Scouts for their review. Once they sort of say, "Yes, this seems right," they'll send it back to us, we'll review, and then in the next couple of, during one of the board meetings very soon, we'll be seeking signatures and approval by the board. And then, Boy Scouts, it's an Eagle Scout project for one of the Boy Scouts, so it's very exciting for the Boy Scouts, it's exciting for the district and the community, because we'll all be able to use the cabin. We had Narcan training for our staff today, very successful. We wanted to just say thank you to Nurse Melissa who coordinated the training. And then on April 23rd at 2:15 in the school library, we're offering Narcan training for community members and parents, so please come out and be trained. It's a very good training, it's thorough, it's pretty sobering, but it gives you the tools and the knowledge to be able to react to a situation. We have reached out to Bosie's Public Relations Department, the leadership team and myself, and we're starting a timeline and plan for the production and distribution of literature in anticipation of our capital project, so we're a little excited about that. We'll have to be board-approved, and then we'll be going out to hopefully to the voters in September of next year for approval to move forward with our capital project. And I just wanted to send out a round, in conclusion, a round of applause to Coulter. Couple of weeks ago, he and his eighth grade artist participated in the school invitational theme exhibition at the Garrison Art Center. And this year, it's called SIGHT. The theme was Hello Dali, D-A-L-I, which is nice because it's nice with Dali's 50th anniversary. And students use their exploration of the dreamlike world of artists such as Chirico and Salvador Dali as inspiration for creating their own works. And approximately 22 schools participated this year. It's the most ever. And I hope, if you didn't make it this year, look for it next year, because it's pretty special artwork from around the districts and from across grades. It was pretty impressive, and it's just nice to see what our kids are doing out and about in the district and beyond. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Laura? Thank you Laura and Alex, principals report.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone? So I will be brief once again, because GSEF needs to be careful, because they are releasing it seems like every few weeks if they have a new release. So again, I would like to thank, so, GSEF, Tormi, Ms. Wieland again, who facilitated just a really nice display of our musical program with Mr. Feig and some of our students. Did also want to say with the science fair, which is just concluding, there are a number of projects that may be picked up after the meeting if you'd like. Want to thank Shala Geneta, Mr. Keegan, and also Emily Cheadle, who were instrumental in running back and forth laps throughout the building for the students to do their presentations, so very much appreciated. So, no further ado.
Thank you, Alex. So the science fair is all done? Do we have winners to announce, or is that some subsequent meeting?
They were announced at length at the end of the day today. It was a lengthy one. I think the announcement system cut out Omni purposefully. I think it had a sense. We will have an award ceremony. We are going to finalize the date. It was originally for this Monday, but we may adjust that, so that is to, to be determined, but we'll have.
Got it. Questions for Alex? No? If not?
We've got a video.
Oh, we've got a video! Oh, I love videos. Thank you.
Better than, I figured it's better.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Douglas Feig, and I'm the music teacher at the Garrison Union Free School. He employs up GSEF's grants for the music program to allow students to explore the different sounds. This year, my grant was for drums, in particular these versatile drumheads.
The advantages of the bucket drummer is very, very light.
And once a groove is established, you're then connected, right into the cultural culture. You create this harmony, this pulse, and that pulse is infectious, not just to the drummers, not just toward dancers and listeners, but to the entire community.
My name's James, I'm in sixth grade. I like drumming because it gets, you know, my head clear. It helps with stress a lot.
Hi, my name is Shiska, and I'm in the fifth grade. Makes you feel like you're marching in a band?
My name is Dana Pearson, I'm in eighth grade, and music is important at Garrison, because being at school, you can go to these classes for free, and I think learning music is something that makes you be able to do.
I wanted to share how happy, or sad, or frustrated, or elated, I can do it with playing a note. I can do it by playing it softly, or playing loudly, and each one can express how I feel.
And I'm sad, sad and sad, sad and sad, hearts weak.
I'm Maya, I'm in third grade. I play "I'm Not Thy Girl" from Wicked on Broadway, with all the drama at school and stuff. It's just really nice to sort of have like an outlet. You can be happy, you can be sad, you can be a mixture. It doesn't really matter, it's sort of limitless.
He could be that boy, but I'm not that girl.
My philosophy in music education is to connect each other through live playing of music. Communication, we can create music, and we can just learn how to speak to each other one way or another.
Thank you, Peterson!
So thank you once again, GSEF, Ms. Wieland. Thank you very much.
Indeed, that's terrific. And this other, treasurer's report.
Yes. You have both the January and the February reports. So I'll go quickly through the January report. We started out first with the multi-fund, starting out with $1,177,739.33. We had revenues, including two different transfers, of $1,383.17. And overall expenses of the month were about $1,455, ending the month at $1,001,055,833.52 for the multi-fund. And on the investments accounts, we started out with $9,526,924.61. Had very little interest of $7,366, and the interfund transfer of the $1.11 million, ending the month with $8,424,297.9. And then going into February, we started out, the multi-fund with the $1.1583.52. Had overall income, including interfund transfers, of $534,433.16, and expenses of just over $546,000, ending the month at $1,092,518.75. And with the investment accounts, we started out with $8,242,297.0, having interest of $6,178.75, and the interfund transfer of the $490, ending the month at $7,944,605.4.
Thank you. Some questions for Sue on the report? If not, why don't we do budget status, revenue status, warrant reports, which are in your package? And then I think we have a budget transfer to approve. Oh, I have to approve this one first? Sorry, there is a resolution. So let's approve the treasurer's report. Resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District accepts the treasurer's reports for January and February 2019 as presented. So move. Any second? All those in favor? Aye, no abstentions, no nays. Thank you, Sue. Okay, now?
Okay. There are quite a few warrant reports and budget status and the revenue reports. The only thing that I would say is during, when I get pissed, these warrants don't match up with the treasurer's reports. I mean, these are January, but I would say we had a lot of expenses that we paid in January. Our Highland Falls bill came in, so that was a big expense. That's why you saw that big transfer on the treasurer's report. Other than that, I would say it's business as usual with the warrants and revenue and budget status. So, was there any specific questions?
So Highland Falls is paid for the?
For the first half of the year.
Okay, so this, right.
They normally, they normally bill us like for September through December in one shot, and that's when the non-resident tuition wait gets settled for the prior year, so we settle up for the prior year. So, it worked out. That bill was, the first bill we got was just about $300,000.
Other questions for Sue on the warrant reports? If not, we have a budget transfer in the amount of $14,600, as tell us what's?
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, it's just some of the computer hardware that, with the wireless, we had a little more money on that, and Bosie's expenses, miscellaneous materials and supplies, expenses.
No, they'll be routine. Any questions on the budget transfer? If not, resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves budget transfer number five in the amount of $14,600.
So, okay.
I got a second. I got a second. All those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no nays. Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
And now?
Now, I guess is why everybody's here for the budget transfer.
Those of you who haven't had a chance to see it yet.
So we're starting to wrap up the budget season, and we have some budget workshops that were attended by a few people. So, Laura, chime in when you feel like it. What we heard was, I think people were happy that we were staying within the cap. I think they were happy that we weren't cutting anything out of the budget. And when we talked about moving, we seemed to be okay with that, so anything else that you can think of?
Yeah, I think overall satisfaction that we're being mindful and fiscally responsible. I know that one man was here, he was talking about supervision, and how, you know, how do we, is it a matter of hiring new personnel, or redistributing current personnel that we have? I mean, just, you know, looking at that. So we took that in, and we've spoken about that too in past meetings as well.
We did have some good talks about budget and the upcoming capital project as well. I think there was some talks about that as far as how we're gonna be mindful with the capital project. So, I can't really think of anything more to talk about, had anything else that might have come up, but.
But there are questions about the capital project, so we were using that to sort of inform ourselves when we start creating the literature and the distribution, making sure that we're very thorough and thoughtful in how we're explaining how we're being environmentally aware and things that we're doing are enhancing the environment that we're living in, and being thoughtful about the energy and our footprint and all of that. So we want to make sure that the things that we are doing are highlighted, and that people feel informed when they're coming to the polls to vote.
And we also met, again, internally to get updates, especially with special aid placements for next year and transportation. And one of the things that you'll see in the budget numbers that I'm presenting, they've changed slightly downward on the budget, not on the levy, and it's because one of the students that we were anticipating to be coming here next year has moved out of the district, out of the state, actually, so they won't be coming here. So I adjusted things accordingly. But so with that, I'll get started. So, this is the preliminary budget. This first part is called the general support, and it's broken down by different areas, and every school is basically broken down the same way. First part is Board of Education, you see a slight change there. Central administration, that would be Laura's office and everything that surrounds that. Finance would be business office, so all the personnel is within there. Also in finance would be our auditors, and then you have staff, which is actually really more, it's mainly legal expense, but other things are thrown in there. And central services are the upkeep of the building, and then special items is more like insurance and that type of things. So overall, the whole general support area, I see going up $21,186. Next section is the instruction, which is really the bulk of our budget. First part is the principal's office and everything that's surrounded in the principal's office. Then you have teaching and tuitions, our general, has it broken down by general education and special education? And even with the adjustment, very cool, the last budget, I had that go, that section going up, I think, over $200,000. So I did bring the number down, but that is the bulk of where our increase is in this budget, is in the special education expenses. And that's just sitting down with the CSE chair and seeing where placements are anticipated to be for next year. And then you have instructional media, that would be our technology basically in the building, and then you have pupil services, which would be guidance and psychology, and that went down slightly. And that was because, basically because of the new hire this year.
I'm sorry, new hire, I mean, had a lower comp than previously?
Yeah, we had somebody leave and hired a lower.
Got it.
So the overall instruction is going up $155,701. And then the next two sections are transportation. I have it broken down by district transportation and contract transportation. Overall, I see transportation going up. The district transportation, I do have an anticipated purchase of a van in there, and speaking with Mike, we're looking at a cost of probably about $25,000, so that's what I put in there.
That's not a capitalized cost?
We could capitalize it. It can be borrowed, we can.
I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not asking pursuant to a recommendation.
We haven't done that here in the past as far as?
For vans, what we did for the school bus, though.
Yeah, we did, and then we voted outright, because we had some money left over a few years ago, and the board voted to do that. For a van, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, it's not much of a benefit for us to do it, but we could.
Okay.
So that can change. I could look this back.
I have no point of view, one way or the other.
Okay. And then the others, the last section here is called undistributed. Not sure why it's called that, but that's what every school calls it. And it includes employee benefits and debt service. And our debt service has naturally started to come down, which I've been talking about for a long time. And the benefits have come down. It's a combination of the rates that we're being charged for TRS and ERS, and less people being on our insurance plans. Our insurance plan costs are going up per person, but we have less people on there. So, it gives us an overall budget for this year, or what I'm proposing is $11,49,291, which would be an increase of $140,389, which would be a budget to budget increase of $1.29 over last year, this current year. And where are we gonna get the money to cover the budget? I mean, anticipating use of appropriated fund balances and reserves from this year, whatever we don't use in this current year, and possibly going into reserves. Interest and other income, miscellaneous income of $40,500. And state aid, I haven't changed that number, although it could change in the next two weeks, of $911,112, which would leave us with a tax levy that we would have to levy of $9,284.11. I know this is small, but it shows the history of where the tax levy has been, and the 1920 is an estimate at this point of an increase of $2.08 on the tax levy. This is just a chart. I know sometimes the board does ask about where our fund balance is, and right now we're at about $3.7 million in fund balance. If we keep using fund balance, when you saw that last slide, which we normally don't use the whole 800, but I could see this year probably using about 400. If we keep using 400, then we would, our fall off point would be, I think in 2026? It is there? I know it's kind of small. The middle row is if we use $300,000 of fund balance a year, and the top row would be as if we used $200,000 of fund balance. Last year, we actually added to our fund balance, if you recall, when the auditors spoke to us in the fall, and that was because I wrote off some old accounts payable. Any questions on fund balance? Okay. So our next steps, the board adopts at our next board meeting, April 10th, and then we have a public hearing on May 8th, and the budget vote on May 21st. Remember to vote, May 21st.
Sue, the only thing you expect to change really at this point is there's a little more certainty on state aid, correct? Otherwise, just about every other number there is well-baked.
I think everything's pretty solid. Laura and I met again this afternoon, I've looked at all of the numbers, and I think we're as good as we're gonna get. I'm very comfortable with the numbers there, but I would anticipate that, I mean, the legislator has actually talked about increasing foundation aid quite a bit. I'm not sure how that's gonna affect us, because foundation aid for us, if it was fully funded, we'd actually lose money, because we've lost enrollment since they froze it back in 2007 or '08. So, I'm not sure if they would hold districts harmless. I would hope they would. It's not awful, but they froze the aid over these years, so.
The increase in special education costs, is there any additional compensation in their new positions, or is that all services?
It's all services and tuitions and aids being added for certain students.
So it is, there is some staff, you know, is it the aide?
Not here, not here, and outside, please, men.
Okay, right, got it.
Okay.
Other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
That's terrific. And as always, we recognize just how much work goes into getting us to this position, so thank you. We have very few items on the consent agenda this evening, only five, I believe. One is to, well, I'll just read the resolutions. First is to accept with, resolved, we accept with regret the resignation for the purposes of retirement of Jean Coons, speech teacher and speech language pathologist affected with the close of business June 30, 2019. So we stress with regret, it should be missed. We have the minutes from the February 13th and March 6th board meetings, those are both in your package. Also in your package are CSE recommendations to be approved, and finally, is the improvement of substitute teachers, which Laura alluded to earlier, and that is approve substitute teacher appointments for Heidi Schwalbach at the daily rate of $100, and Amanda Justu, Jenny Vogel, and John White at the daily rate of $85 for the 2018 and '19 school year. And that's it. I need to so move? So move. I need a second.
Seconded.
Any questions or comments? Excellent. In that case, all those in favor? Aye. No abstentions, no nays. Two sets of, for discussion, two sets of committee minutes, both of those are in your package. Our usual practice is for any board member, and unfortunately, as I mentioned at the outset, we are somewhat truncated in that regard tonight, but any board member who attended either of those committee meetings and wants to call anything special to the board's attention now is the time to do it. But I don't see anybody unless, I don't see anybody who attended any of those meetings who happens to be here, so we may have to move beyond that.
Well, I attended the.
Oh, there was. Anything you want to add is not, that needs to be called for our attention, is not covered in the minutes.
So the only thing to call, but it's actually to Laura's attention, David Gordon had questions about the scout cabin.
Okay.
So.
We'll read that down.
Yeah, that'll be great. Thank you.
Excellent. We are, believe it or not, at this early hour, up to the public comment portion of the meeting, and we're gratified to see, for a change, a substantial number of members of the public with us. So with that, I will open the floor to public comment, and I will use my presidential discretion, perhaps, to recognize first, our friends from the Garrison, Desmond Fish Public Library, who've been here at the very beginning of the meeting. Anita?
I'm here, sir.
There you go, check in by all means. The floor is yours.
I'm Anita Linetz. I'm the president of board of the Desmond Fish Public Library here in Garrison, and this is Denver Carey, our director, and we also have a board member here, Kaila Cook Albert, who's probably wearing five multiple hats today. But anyway, thank you for welcoming us. As you know, a few years ago, you sat in your place. As you know, a few years ago, I sat in your place, and at that time, I had very little idea of how libraries in New York State, much less the Desmond Fish Public Library, were funded. I had absolutely no idea. Now, I know a lot more. Like school districts, public libraries in New York are funded, are chartered by and supported by the, or governed by, the New York State Department of Education. And the New York State Department of Education views libraries as providing a public service to the community. And increasingly, over the years, has encouraged public libraries to obtain local taxpayer support, so that local taxpayers are, in effect, investing in their local public libraries. As far as Desmond Fish is concerned, we were founded in nineteen eighty. For many years, we were basically funded by private funds and donations. But as our investment in technology expanded, as our services to the community expanded, that hasn't been enough. And so, for the first time, five years ago, we asked taxpayers to support us to the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars in annual taxpayer support. Now, we're coming, going to come back to the taxpayers for an additional amount. And the reason we're here tonight is that the state of New York says that library votes can be attached to school district budget votes. This is a way of bringing more people out, of getting more community involvement in the process. And we are very grateful to you for what we're going to ask you to do, which is to append our proposition to your vote on May twenty-first. We will be encouraging people to come out and vote on that date. And Jen will explain what the proposition is. And I don't know if you want to hand it over.
The top ones are really...
Right.
The library's board of trustees is committed to building a strong, transparent, and sustainable organization that serves everyone in our community. And we are asking Garrison School District voters to support sustainable funding and ensure that the library remains a vital and vibrant resource for our community for many years to come. I'm submitting a letter from our library board president and a petition signed by over twenty-five eligible voters residing in the Garrison School District to formally request that the Desmond Fish Public Library's funding proposition be placed on the next school ballot in May nineteen, in May twenty. The proposed wording for the library's funding proposition reads as follows. Shall an increase to the current annual appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars to a total annual appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars, separate and apart from the Garrison Union Free School District annual school district budget, be approved to support and maintain the public Alice Curtis Desmond and Hamilton Fish Library, which sum shall be raised annually by the tax upon the taxable property of the school district, and which appropriation shall be the annual appropriation for the library until changed by further vote of the electors of the school district. Such tax to be levied and collected yearly as are other general taxes and paid over to the library. We will be holding a series of informational meetings at the library in the coming months. And more information about our proposition and answers to frequently asked questions can be found through the library's website at desmondfishlibrary.org-publicsupport. And thank you again to Laura and to everyone at the school. I really appreciate your help with this, and I really appreciate our relationship with the school. We definitely want to keep that as strong as possible, and we'll do our best to get as many people out for the vote as we can. So, thank you.
Jen and Anita, I just want to be clear so everyone understands, while we always appreciate expressions of gratitude and support, by virtue of your submitting the petition with the twenty-five eligible signatures, you qualify to be on the ballot. But there is no, at no point do we approve the actual placement on the ballot. You do that as of right, by virtue of collecting the twenty-five signatures.
Correct.
We can't deny the positioning. We can't, nor can we endorse or oppose the proposition as written.
Right.
So, I think, I'm grateful that whoever drafted the proposition made specific reference to the fact that the decision to support one or the other of those propositions are independent of each other, separate, and in no way connected, so that a voter deciding to support one should make that decision on its own terms and without reference to whatever the other entity is asking for from the voters. Is that a, that's a fair statement of the current standard play?
Very fair. Absolutely. Right.
Yeah, I think it's important that voters understand that distinction.
Right. They're completely separate, yes.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As much as, we would love to be able to, for the purposes, for clarity's sake, we as a board cannot even advocate for our own budget.
Right.
Right? Much less for yours. So, while we appreciate, we do genuinely appreciate you taking the time to come, explain what your intentions are, submit the petition. We wish you best of luck in the way we would do anybody else, but that's about as far as we can go.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
By the way, any other comments or questions from other board members, for Anita or Jen? If not, thanks again, guys. There are any number of other members of the public who are here tonight, any one of whom is welcome to take the floor.
I'm going to jump in here while we still have a great-sized audience. Hi, I'm Sarah Tormey. I'm the president of GSEF. I'm so happy you all are here tonight. We are having our annual Spring Thaw on April sixth over at Bear Mountain. I was just over there today. They're a wonderful partner to us. We're very excited for this event. Tickets are on sale now at gsef.net. You can also leave a check here at the school, backpack mail it, however you want to. Tickets are a hundred dollars each until Sunday, and then the price goes up. Tickets are selling faster than ever this year, and we do have a capacity limit, so please, buy your tickets in advance. We will only be able to sell a limited number at the door. But we are so excited by the support we've already seen from the community. Your support at events like Spring Thaw helps fund things like what you saw in the music video with the hand drums, the Green Classroom Initiative, classroom libraries, which put hundreds of books in all of our classrooms. So, please come out. It'll be a really fun night. There'll be dancing, dinner, so hope to see everybody there. And then, just a small note, as a parent, not with my GSEF hat on. In relation to the topic of substitutes that we've been talking about for a couple meetings now, I want to thank the board for increasing the pay. I also want to point out that personally, I've noticed a difference when the aides step in. For example, when Ms. Chuliano's out of second grade, and Ms. Delesio, who's so familiar with that class, steps in, it's really amazing how the transitions are seamless. So, I think, when possible, having more aides is great. I know it impacts the budget, but I also want to point out what a great job they do when they step in and fill those roles. So, thank you.
Sarah, thank you very much. As I said a moment ago, we can't advocate for our own budget or the library's, but we can most wholeheartedly advocate for attendance at the Spring Thaw. It's a great event, and something to look forward to. Other members of the public, the floor is open. Ms. Ford.
It's been a while. I'm Crystal Ford. So, I just got back from a three-day training on climate change, and I'll sum it up to you in one sentence. Climate change is happening. It's caused by us. We have to change, but can we? The answer is yes to all of it, but we seem to be stuck on the change part. So, as our earth is getting hotter and as the time is running out, we continue to put in oil and gas, because change is hard. Change is unknown. There's risk to change. So, that's why I'm, as much as I would like to just get on with everything, I really cannot let go of us going to a oil heating system. Because when we talk about what's the payback with geothermal, I think that's the wrong question. I think the right question is, what is the risk in continuing to use oil? If we continue to use oil, there is a good chance, in the near future, a carbon price will be passed. I have been working for two years on a federal campaign to price carbon. Our bill has been introduced, it's getting a lot of support. And what that would mean for us is that every year, the price on oil would go up twenty cents, twenty cents. So, in five years, oil is a dollar more. Ten years, it's two dollars more. In fifteen years, it's three dollars more. And that's not insignificant when you're heating fourteen thousand gallons of oil, times one, times two. That's money that could be spent on books, that's money that could be spent on computers instead of basically spending it on oil costs. The other thing that's not taken to account in this payback scenario is what are the external costs of burning carbon that is borne by us, by society? So, let's see, droughts, forests, fires, hurricanes, ocean acidification, water scarcity, famine, species extinction, infectious disease, climate refugees, sea level rise, and the number-one threat to our global economy. That's it. That's it. Just a small list, but that's actually just climate change. That's not talking about the oil trains running up and down the Hudson. That's not talking about them drilling in the Arctic, or the oil spilled down on the coast of the Gulf Coast. So, the, there are so many external risks to continuing going with oil. So, that leads me to my next point. What do we do? We have an option. We can put it to the voters, see if they want geothermal. Or we can see if there's alternative heating systems that don't include oil or geothermal. And I actually have been calling architects and engineers, and Madeline can attest to this, I literally will call up engineers and architects, and I'm like talking to them, like, can we do heat pumps? What can we do? And I found a case study of a school, similar size, thirty-five thousand square foot, built in nineteen seventy-two, twenty-one classrooms, K to eight, two-hundred-and-fifty students. Their mission is to provide an exceptional learning environment, this Plainfield Elementary School. And they were committed to reducing their energy consumption for a better bottom line and healthier environment. So, in two thousand and nine, the school board upgraded the building envelope, the mechanical system. They identified high-efficiency heat pumps, and exhaust air energy recovery, and demand control ventilation as the most impactful, energy-efficient measures. And they also did an accurate building model to quantify the annual energy savings, which I don't think that was done for our capital improvement project. So, the end result is a reduction of fuel oil from twenty-three thousand gallons to four thousand gallons. It decreased in electricity from two-hundred-thousand kilowatts to one-hundred-and-fifty-five kilowatts. And they decreased the school's carbon by one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand tons of carbon. And to quote them, they said, "Today, cost savings have allowed the school to fund good education rather than spending money on energy expenses." And where is this? This is in New Hampshire. So, if New Hampshire can put heat pumps in, why can't New York? Our architect said, "We can't," but that's actually, that's not true. I've talked to lots of architects who've said, "Yes, you can do heat pumps in our area." So, last Friday, we all know, there was a walkout, a strike for climate. Over one point four million high school students in three hundred cities around the world took to the streets to demand serious climate action from their representatives. So, I mean, this is our children who are literally walking out the door and saying, "Please do something." And we need to act, every single one of us. And it's going to be more than a few solar panels and more than a few wind turbines that are going to actually get us through this crisis. It's going to take big change, change that's uncomfortable, but we still have to do it. And I just think that it's, I think it's a decision we will regret if we put in oil right now, committing us to oil for thirty more years. And I think you'll see that there's support in the community. I've reached out to people who don't even have children in the school, and I have eighty signatures on a petition, saying like, "Let's find a solution that does not involve oil for heating." And, you know, a lot of the people who signed don't have kids as well, and I'm happy to send that on to you. So, really, this is just, I know, I know that you guys all care about our children. That's not even in question. I'm just trying to show you that you have the support from the community to make this really hard choice. And the right time to do the right thing is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal, as always. Other members of the public?
My name is Sarah McHugh. My daughter is in kindergarten here. And I just want to support all of the points that Crystal made. I think they're excellent points. I think in order to future-proof the school, we need to look at other options. And I think at a minimum, other options need to be presented to the voters. I think they need to have more options than simply oil on the table as the only possible approach to this. And so, I think voters need to be given the choice, and given a clear choice and more information about exactly what it is the school is signing up for for the next thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Maxine Miles. And to add to what Crystal said also, at the very minimum, whatever happens, whatever system we end up with, I think at the very, very minimum, we should do an energy audit. Because whatever ends up here, we would be sizing it a lot bigger if we don't seal up the windows, if we don't put insulations. So, we should start with just an energy audit. It's not going to cost as much as a geothermal system. And it will decrease the overall operation expenses right away, and you'll see some return right away. So, even while you wait until this plan is implemented, you can do an energy audit now and start implementing sealing the windows, insulation, and it will help the overall budget. And, of course, this will add to the overall. So, once you reduce the demand or the amount of load that the building has, whatever you end up with at the end will be a smaller system, cheaper equipment to buy, and cheaper to maintain overall.
I could say, actually, I think it's a very good idea, in as much as, what an energy audit would allow us to do, would be to take a look at our status quo, where we are currently with our facilities, and compare that to what's planned for the capital project, including things like more energy-efficient windows, better insulation, more efficient lighting, LEDs versus the current system, and so forth, and be able to say to the public who have concerns about energy consumption, the environmental impact of whatever course we go forward with, that the plan, the capital plan, as currently structured, includes more, is more energy-aware, and includes more energy efficiencies than involved in the single, the one part of the equation, which is upgrading our existing heating system. Not necessarily going, by the way, it's important to distinguish for everybody, so they understand, it is not a question of going to oil. We already have an oil-fired system in place. We have two boilers for the elementary school portion of the building, both of which have a significant useful life still ahead of them. What we're trying to do is be more efficient in how that system is used, and converting it from a steam, which is a very energy-intensive, energy-intensive way of generating heat, to a water, a hot water system, and using air hammer, more efficient, more modern air hammer to transfer that heat into the classrooms in the facility. Having said that, being able to demonstrate via an energy audit what those savings are and what the other energy savings might be, I think is a very good idea. And when, I'm speaking only for myself and not necessarily the board, I don't expect that, I don't know what the rest of the board would think, but I think it's a good idea.
And actually, Sue and I were just talking about that today, about exploring that idea, just to see sort of...
We've been talking about it, haven't we?
Yeah.
It's a company that, the business officials in the area have met a few months back, and I brought it to Laura's. It's something that I thought we should do, so.
Let's, okay, then.
We all agree.
Good, then let's figure out what it's going to call, when it can be done, what it costs to do it, who ought to do it, and let's bring that to the board and get that done. It's not something we should necessarily drag on.
Yeah.
Okay. Other members of the public, the floor remains open.
I have a question. Do I have to?
Probably best that you introduce yourself. Actually, not even best, it's the policy, you have to, in part because the people at home won't know who's talking to the board.
She's a good speaker, though. Sorry, I'm going to be so fast, because I'm Jocelyn Appicello, and I'm going to bring the two kids home. So, I wanted to just jump in, in support of what Crystal and the others have brought up. I think, especially her research into the school that has documented evidence of success in improving education and reducing costs is one that we should really look at as a school. And also, of course, bringing more power to the voters to make decisions, I think, should also always be part of the equation. And thank you for your time.
Jocelyn, I have a question. I heard from Jason today.
Yes.
That there is a CCA initiative that's taking place, that may happen before the end of the year, that might produce a renewable...
Renewable option.
A renewable source... that might produce a renewable source of energy that we might be able to participate in. Can you, can you speak to, you probably know much more about it. I'm sure you do know more about it than I do. Can you explain it a little bit?
Well, the Community Choice Aggregation, which Jason, my partner, knows much more about and helped to work on getting passed around, all around this entire area. So, Garrison, Coal Spring, Nelsonville, Fishkill, Wapnders Falls, and Newburgh, Kipsey, and I'm probably forgetting some, have signed on to this thing called Community Choice Aggregation, where together, kind of like, aggregated, we have more power in advocating for energy sources that are from renewables. And in fact, we are, the plan requires that we actually can't move forward with any type of energy procurement unless the renewables are price-matched or more affordable than what we are currently getting. So, it's a win-win situation for the consumer because you are guaranteed at least the same energy costs as before. And it's also a positive for our environmental impact because we are trying to source renewables. And there's also a clause in there to prioritize locally harvested renewable energy. So, what I know now is that this is happening. We're not really waiting much longer. We just have the entity that will be kind of doing all of the negotiating, just kind of finalizing over the next several months with all of these different municipalities to try to get this on board. It'll happen before the end of the year.
Do you, so do you have a sense of whether this source of renewable energy would be available to us?
As a school?
To the school within the foreseeable future?
Yes. It's an opt-out situation. So, we all would be, I actually don't know if a school or municipal, or if it's automatically opted in. But for residents, it's an automatic opt-in, and you can opt out if you choose to. And this isn't in perpetuity, whatever that means.
So, this is not about geothermal. This is about solar, maybe, is it, or?
And wind.
And wind.
Yeah, and probably water and other sources. Whatever sources are the most affordable, the CCA is legally bound to source.
So, these are, I'm sorry, I just did. These are all, these are all sources of electric?
Or electricity.
Electrical energy.
That's right. And so, it doesn't have to do with whether we're burning oil?
No, no, right. It's how you pay for, it's how you source and pay for electricity in function of how it's generated.
Exactly. That's what it is. Any more questions on that? So, I'm not an expert, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We did have one more, or no? Yes? Only once?
My name is Cassandra. I have three children at this school. And I'm here to support Crystal and her fight for, for good energy. And I guess my question, or what makes, I think, people nervous is the fact that we feel we're gonna be locked into something for thirty years. And so, as I understood from you today, you are actually not putting in oil. We are improving the oil situation that we have.
Correct.
So, why is there that thirty-year, we're stuck with, you know, the system for the next thirty years? Is that because of financial reasons? That we're paying it for the next thirty years for the improved system? Or is there any wiggle room to just keep making baby steps forward and keep improving upon the system as time goes? Or is this like a death sentence, thirty years? There's just nothing we can do or infer?
Well, I can definitively answer this. There's no death sentences involved in the proposition. The thirty-year is subject to subsequent clarification or correction, but as I understand it, fairly confident, the thirty-year number in this instance refers to the projected serviceable life remaining on the two boilers that we have. So, you've got two pieces of equipment that can be made to be functioning with less energy, more efficiently, but still have a serviceable life of thirty years on them. Now, you could choose any subsequent border.
So, it's just the lifespan of the oil?
It's the projected serviceable life of what we have already.
Okay, thank you.
Let's step out here. I can just speak loud. Hi, everybody. I'm Alex Clifton. I grew up in Garrison, went to Garrison School. And seeing this all play out over my whole lifetime, and I've known for a long time that we're gonna face this moment. And I think it is an emergency. And it's something that we have to face up to. And I think it will be, we'll start to realize in the coming years that it is an emergency. And I'm sounding the alarm now. I'm saying every time that we have an opportunity to either go off this cliff or veer away from it, we need to veer away from it. And I'm here to support everyone who spoke before. Thank you, Crystal, for your leadership. I am so grateful that you are a member of this community. And all of you, for what you do here that we all do together. Like, I don't wanna just like polarize this or anything like that, but I just wanna say that we have to make sure that we're dotting our i's and we're crossing our t's, and we're looking for every opportunity to be a community that leads in this effort to do the right thing now. Because now is the time. And if we let this pass, we're just, it's like another time that we've let this opportunity pass. Now is our opportunity. Let's very, let's make absolutely certain that we are doing the right thing in the approach to however we spend our money when it comes to energy. And I think that this community especially has a lot of support for that. And I think that that will be evident over time here, especially tonight and into the future. So, I thank you very much for everything y'all do. And also for everyone coming out. And let's, like, let's really just take a moment, pause, look at what we're doing, and be absolutely certain that it is the right approach. Because the decisions we make now do lock us into things, and we are definitely facing like a critical future. And it's, in many ways, it's gonna sneak into our lives. And just, it's not very, it's inconvenient, but it's true, I think. And that's like why that statement is what it is. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
I have a clarifying question to Crystal about her presentation.
Sure.
Crystal, were you implying that there is reason to look into a renewable alternative other than geothermal?
Yes, actually, I have this lovely two-hundred-page manual about retrofitting. It's a real page-turner. And it actually mentions different audits. But I actually, I spoke with this guy who is an engineer, and he also does Level Three ASHRAI audits, which is like whole building system. He will like, basically, first they go through, like, you know, measure out what the leakages and all that. But then they like model out what different systems your school could do, and like what you would save in energy. And he said, he actually said, like, you could do heat pumps, you could do geothermal. And then he gave this other one, I don't know, you probably know better than me. It's like some sort of condensing boiler unit thing. He like, I'll have to like look through my notes. But he gave me three different options that didn't include oil. And I've often heard, I've heard this from the engineers, that the architects are the block between you and what you want. So, I'm just putting that out there. No offense to my architect friend, she's a real... But the engineers have been like, "The architects, these are the architects."
I expected you asked the architect.
Two thousand and eighteen, family Wallace was invited to dinner with neighbors of ours. On the way there, our daughter Sophia started telling us about Spanish class. She told me that her Spanish teacher had basically lost control of the class, that her fellow students were sneaking out, that the teacher was no longer assigning homework. And when she did, she was no longer checking it. That the students were doing homework from other subjects in the class, and the teacher would pretend to call the principal on one of the troubled students. And that not only had Sophia not learned anything this year, but was forgetting what she had learned previously. I'm gonna say that again. Not only was Sophia not learning anything this year, but was forgetting what she had learned previously. My response each time was the word "what", followed by a question mark in ever higher opt-ins. "What?" It is needless to say that I was fuming and very upset during our dinner. The next day, I started to write an email to the principal, Alex, but decided that this was such an urgent matter that I wanted to speak to him instead. I called the school and said that I wanted to speak to Mr. Levine. I ended up leaving him a voicemail. "Mr. Levine, this is Stephen Wallace, Sophia Wallace's dad. There is an issue with the Spanish teacher. I would like to speak to you urgently. Thank you." One week later, I was still waiting to speak with Mr. Levine. I was even more angry. About that time, there was a school concert. At the end, I approached Mr. Levine and introduced myself, and said that I had left him a voicemail. He acted like he had not listened to it. I quickly explained what Sophia had told me the previous week. He said he would call me the following day. The following afternoon, my phone rang, and we spoke. The gist of our conversation was that, like I said earlier, the teacher had lost control of the class, and that Sophia was not only not learning anything, but was forgetting what she had learned. I said this was unacceptable, and that something had to be done soon so that as not to lose the entire school year. Right? I never heard back from Mr. Levine after our conversation, and once in a while, would check in with Sophia. "So, Sophia, how's Spanish going?" "Pretty badly," would be her reply, over and over, repeat. So, cut forward. It's early March, and Sarah, my wife, asked me to drop the kids off to school so that she can register Jasmine into an acting class at the rec center. I drive onto the school property, and there is Laura, our superintendent greeting the kids going into school. I quickly jump out of the car and ask Laura, "What's going on with the Spanish teacher?" And that Sarah and I are very concerned. I tell her that this is a mission-critical. We don't have a long conversation, but I've delivered my message. Later that same day, I am just sitting down with Sarah to watch Jasmine in our fifth-grade after-school play. Sarah turns around to me and tells me that she has heard that the Spanish teacher has been on vacation and not left any work for the students to do. My response was, "What?" At the end of the play, I see Mr. Levine and make a quick run over to him. "So, Mr. Levine, I'm hearing that the Spanish teacher has taken off and has left no homework or anything. What's up?" Mr. Levine does his best impression of the scarecrow from The Wizard of Oz. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna ask you.
Yes.
One, there's, we can avoid the ad hominem. Two. If there's a point which you wanna get to, or the question for the superintendent, maybe you could ask it now.
Can I just, okay, let me, let me try here, okay? Now, I'm... So, Mr. Levine says to me, "I don't know, speak to Laura." This is, I mean, before I even go into this, I wanna say that this is very serious to me, like to everyone. But when I heard, let's say it like this. I put myself through college. I believe very much in education. We are, and this is in here. We are in Garrison, and part of it is for the school that's here. It's an excellent school. That's part of the reason, I think, that most of us are living in Garrison. Or a large part of it is a school in Garrison. And when I, when I hear from Sophia that she is not learning, and that the teacher has completely lost her, her way, let's say it like that, and has basically broken down, and that the teacher cried in front of the class. Okay? I mean, Sophia went to her when she had one of the, the, the school tests, whatever it was, in midterm. And they took the test in the morning. And she goes there in the afternoon saying, "Do you know what my grade is?" And the teacher said, "Oh, I don't know, but wait a minute." And gives her a hundred, doesn't even read her essay. And Sophia had one, one of the questions were wrong. And I'm listening to that, like, you've got to be kidding me. And so, I was, when I spoke to Mr. Levine in December, and I'm hearing this for the first time, you can imagine my upset, because I want my kids to learn. We only have a small window where our kids can learn. Sophia, who's on her phone a lot, which we have to try and grab away, who's not really doing that much art, really just wants to ride horses now. Okay? Where she is wanting to learn Spanish. And there are other parents here whose children want to learn. And one of them has never had a language before and arrives here and has been deprived of her right to learn. So, the kids are now, we're up to this point where we have, and I wanted to read this because I wanted to keep it, the notes correct on how it's been dealt with, and not have to ad lib like this. So, but if I'm going to, I will. I'm really upset about this and what the position we're in. And I wanted to avoid this, that now we are in almost the end of March. We have lost practically the entire year. I'm sure that other parents came here and spoke to you prior to me, knowing in beginning of December, or speaking maybe the second week of December. I know there are other parents that I've talked to that brought up the subject before. The school made the hire. I have a small business. I've hired people. I've also, as a private owner of a business, can fire them. I know that there's so many regulations. This is a, and I understand that. And I understand we're dealing with personal lives and, and problems and people's people. We're not, we're not machines, we're human beings. And I understand that. But I also understand that I want my children to succeed as much as possible. And I wanna give them everything I can to have that success. Because the world's a tough place, and you have to make the best you can with what you've got. So, I'm very frustrated standing here right now that, and I've never been to here. I'm usually working when, when these things are happening. And I brought this up to Mr. Levine in December with a whole point, saying, "Let's not get this past January." And I'm not the boss, and I understand there's a lot that I don't know. But here we are in the end of March. We haven't been dealt with properly. We were, Sarah wrote an email. Fine, we've had, we had. I'm not knowing anything and being in the dark. And we wrote, and she wrote an email that I helped her with. I'm gonna read it. "Dear Mr. Levine and Ms. Mitchell, I am writing to ask the question, 'What is happening with our eighth-grade Spanish education?' There is a rumor that the teacher took a vacation and didn't let the school know. Therefore, there were no plans left for the students in her absence. My daughter Sophia tells me that there has been no preparation for the upcoming exams, and she is very concerned. Sophia has told us she has learned nothing this year, and the classes when they were happening have been completely disorganized, with kids in control and taking advantage of a teacher struggling to keep order. My husband and I are very, extremely upset. We are wondering how this situation could have gone on this long when these problems started many months ago. We believe this issue urgently needs to be addressed, and that substitute Spanish teacher is required immediately to save what is left of the school year. I would like to hear back from you ASAP." So, that was that.
That may be a good point, which to let Ms. Mitchell answer the questions, because there were questions that were raised in the email.
Just to say, we had responses on the emails, which I found completely not satisfactory. And I feel that, and I'm allowed to feel this, I feel like we've, we've been really let down. And that if you knew, if it's possible that you knew that the teacher, which is a first-year teacher, so you have more probably latitude with, with, with working with her[1773.26] with working with her or not having her working with her, that in this case, maybe there was a way to do it sooner to get her... If she clearly is not functioning within a few weeks or a month, there must have been someone knowing something about it where she's not, she's lost control of the children. That maybe we could have moved her over a bit and gotten some substitutes in then so that we would have saved maybe half a year. We're close to losing the entire year. And I don't see someone here, but I know that her daughter is going to be taking Spanish one over again next year. And I find this completely unacceptable. And I know, again, we're not, they're not machines and people make mistakes and everything. But what I'm saying, the reason I'm angry and I'm here is that I really feel like this was not... Maybe this was an urgent matter that wasn't dealt with urgently. And that's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
No, no, no.
You know.
I understand the point. But this is the time to let Ms. Mitchell respond.
Yeah, please.
So, Stephen, I definitely hear and fear your... Hear and feel your anger. The intention is never to have our students in this situation. It's very unfortunate. I know people are very frustrated, as I am, and concerned just sort of with process, which was followed with due diligence to ensure that we met a goal without question. And I know people don't like that answer and I'm sorry. What we're trying to do is to move forward in a fast way to identify somebody who could replace our Spanish teacher. Just the steps that we've taken. And these are difficult positions because there aren't that many foreign language teachers. So, we've looked, we have posted on OLOS for a position. We've reached out to our component partners. We've reached out to our district curriculum council in Manhattanville. We've reached out to our neighboring districts. We've looked for tutors. This is not a K-6 teacher where there are many of them that we could just reach out to and ask them to join us. So, in the meantime, even during, in the classroom, Alex has been trying to come up with resources and lessons to help support the existing curriculum. I know those are not the answers that you want, but they're the sincere and honest ones.
But can I just say one thing in order to respond to that? Okay? I want to thank Alex for trying, okay? But Sophia told me that whatever it was that you gave them, they couldn't read the Spanish and had to look it up on Google, had it translated on Google.
I can... Yeah, that might help.
And I also want to say...
They don't have the knowledge base or the foundation to even fulfill it.
Which is crazy.
So, I mean, I know you were trying to come up with a solution, but it didn't. It's basically a study of art.
Unless Laura's not finished, but...
And I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's...
I mean, it's not the optimal condition right now and we know that and we're sorry and we apologize when we're doing our best to follow the process to meet an end and hopefully move forward. And I know time is running out and we too feel, we're concerned. We have anxiety and we're just trying to find somebody at least to help our eighth graders so that they're prepared for the proficiency test. And we'll work with the seniors and get them ready for next year.
But again, can I please respond to this? I don't understand why this didn't happen three months ago or something that, if they're hard to find and we know that the... This is my frustration, is that we know the teacher was failing as a teacher. And even not, let's say, the word fiery. I don't know what I can say. But whatever it was, to at least have had an aide for her to take over, to jump in, at least be looking three months ago or four months ago or two months ago. I was hoping that when I called in December, when I talked to Alex, that at least it would be taken care of by maybe January. It is now March and it's too late. And I'm sorry, I don't want to say that. And if you just prepared the eighth grader for a test, who cares about the test and the proficiency? They haven't learned anything.
You're absolutely right. The learning part is super important, but I know there's a lot of anxiety around the test too. So, we don't want that for our students and we don't want that for our families either.
I'm Hope Torino. I have a daughter just started the eighth grade. I spoke to Alex in November about this. Was sent to talk to the teacher. I had multiple times that the teacher kind of talked to me on the phone very oddly. I reflected it back, et cetera. So I had the same feeling really, like November. In November, I was like, "We better get on this" because it's one year. I didn't even know there was a proficiency test, but now I've got a kid who's... I don't think she can do that test, so I don't know what that means. So, that's, you know, the meeting I would like to have the next week in private, but since this is coming up now, I just want to know, what is the protocol when you have a teacher who is not functioning properly? Was that why there was so much delay? What were the reasons for the delay? I made three appointments with her. Every time we came to the appointment, she was absent. I was told there was an illness. Okay, wait for the next one, set up the next one, absent. She calls me, she makes it up, she talks to me. She told me my daughter knew so much Spanish because she had taken two years of Latin before. My daughter took no Latin. She's... And she, I mean, there are other issues. So, it was clear from my daughter's report. And I think one of the things I was asked by Alex is, "Have your daughter come in, but you can't read on the kids. They're too young to really can go to the principal and stand up. That's not okay." So, I just want to know what is the... What has been happening behind our backs that wasn't reported to us? That's what I would like to know. Were you on it? Were you trying to address it? Could you even see it? Because I felt like my conversations with Alex was that it was hard for them to even see that there was a problem, even though the kids were reporting so much at the bus stop to all of us and to me. You know, very particularly a kid who's trying to get on the high honors, you know, semester. And now she's facing the test and she's gonna fail easily because she doesn't even have the first beginnings of grammar from a whole year being in this class. So that's my question.
What's the process that went on behind?
Unless Laura wants to answer that question. But go ahead, David. You've been waiting to ask the question.
No, 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 please.
There is a process when teachers are struggling or seemingly failing. There are a lot of lesson plan reviewing, sending them to professional development or classroom management. There are a lot of things we do to help struggling teachers. So, there was a mixture of things that we were trying to do to support what we do for all of our teachers when we see that they're in need of some targeted help. And I assure you, it wasn't something we were missing. It's something that we were trying to support, but also as we're moving forward, seeing, you know, following a process to an end.
One second. David, you've been waiting.
Yeah, well, I just wanted, first of all, to express my appreciation to Stephen and to Ms. Torino. You're right. That. And I think that what has to happen now... No, excuse me.
You've communicated as parents.
As a parent, that's right. Because I'm both a member of the board. As a board member, I would recommend, recommend, I would urge Laura and Mr. Levine to compile a granular record, beginning with why this teacher was hired in the first place. When you first became aware of problems with her, were there any restrictions imposed on you by the state that kept you from acting? This is a non-tenure teacher. And how many times did you hear this from parents? What did you do about it? And why are we now at the end of March with basically a situation that the parents have described very effectively? I think there's a broader question of how we're dealing with ineffective, non-tenure faculty. But let's focus on this one because this is what people are concerned about. But I think that I would urge that you compile the report, a very granular report.
I'm just wondering.
Excuse me, Laura, if I might, David.
Yeah.
Let me suggest, in the same way you're making a suggestion, that perhaps, given the time left in the school year, the superintendent and the principal's time, be better focused on what they're gonna do to address the situation going forward for the balance of the year. What solutions are, what solutions are possible? What solutions can be most quickly put into place? Rather than having them do, as you said, a detailed, granular retrospective. I think on the basis of the reports that we have received tonight, we all have a pretty good idea that there's a problem here. We have a pretty good idea of when that problem became apparent and we have a pretty good idea of what some of the interim steps were. So I'm not sure that the benefit of the granular report that you're asking for would outweigh or would be... The benefits of that would outweigh the benefits of focusing your energy in the immediate term on what can be done to help these students acquire at least the modicum of Spanish that would be necessary to take the proficiency test and address some of these learn issues.
I have to respectfully disagree with you. I think that, I don't think that it's either-or situation. I think that both can be done. And I think that what hasn't been answered is Stephen's question about why there's been such a delay in dealing with numerous reports that are on the record, written, oral reports that are on the record. And I think the parents were entitled to it.
Well, here's what I would say about it. I know what the administrative workload is for both of these people and the rest of the administrative team and the faculty as well. And I'm also pretty confident that their plates are, at this point, as they always are, near to or overflowing with other obligations. So I will reiterate, to the extent administrative energy is gonna be put, focused on this problem, it ought to be forward-looking and getting solutions in place now rather than doing granular retrospectives. One can carry water on both shoulders, but that doesn't mean that the result is gonna be equally satisfactory. So...
I'd like to say one more thing, please.
By all means.
Thank you. You were looking out for supporting, trying to help. I just don't understand why we were... It's the children that are important. She was clearly not equipped. And I'm trying to be careful with my words. She was clearly not equipped to be teaching, basically, period. She had lost complete control of that class, absolutely. Well, whatever. I'm just saying, she had lost control. Those students were walking all over her. It was falling apart and it was at that point, right then, before, to my daughter. And I'm sorry to have to be like this, but I am pissed that this has gone down like this. And I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm just saying, like, this did not work. And though you're responsible for the teacher and I understand you're wanting to support her, I wanted more action supporting my kid. That they don't, they are sitting there right now, every day, right now, with nothing. They're on their phones playing games. This is ridiculous.
Look, we're worried and anxious about this test that they have no ability to pass. But I want to, I just want to answer another question. Is there a process or protocol in public school systems in this district where when you have a teacher who is unfit, what is the process? Because the process that happened for me and the other parents who complained seemed completely like... It made me feel like I was nuts for complaining because there was no responsiveness. It was kind of like, "Well, why don't you try this first, that first..." And I'm saying, I'm reflecting the way the teacher's talking to me and people are saying, "You know, we'll try talking to him." It was, but my daughter, this is not somebody you talk to. Because there was some, there was a connection problem for this teacher internally and it was being expressed in the class. What I don't understand is it seemed like there's no protocol. So that's my question. Is there a protocol that when I report to Alex or he reports to you, how is it handled other than getting the parent to go push it back and the parent over the teacher? It seemed like there was no... I didn't even feel like the response should have been something like, "I hear you. That sounds very concerning and I want to see what I can do to have some observations and talk with the teacher." If you talk to the teacher, you could see there was a disconnect. That should, but that was, I was complaining about that in November. That was even too late then, in my book. So that's my question. What is the protocol? If there isn't one, let's get one quick. So if you have this again, you're not, you know, getting all this hostility and we're not pissed off and freaked out. And the kids are, you know, the kid, you're right, if the kids are... Sorry, teachers, right?
You know, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's mostly based on observations, class visits, also the conversations with parents. So it's, it's, as we're moving toward, you know, through a year with a teacher, we're gathering and documenting along the way. But if it's one parent, we take the concerns, of course, and either you're personally sharing it with the teacher or we're following up, going, "This is what a parent, there's a parent concern here. Can you tell us more about it? Is there something that we need to support you with? Is it happening? Is it not happening?" So, there are a lot of conversations. There are a lot of evaluations. There are a lot of class visits. But it has to happen over time. So if it's one evaluation and one parent concern, that's not going to terminate a teacher. It's going to, or grow a teacher. Both take time. So I know, I know we're running out of time. I know you're frustrated. This is, again, this is not an optimal condition. This is not where I want to be as a superintendent or Alex wants to be as a principal. And I know you want to know sort of the history towards it and I think I've shared that a number of times. But I'm feeling that here we are and we need to figure out how we're gonna move forward. And that's what we're trying to do in... Yes, hand up.
Well, I was just thinking in terms of solutions. I, being a parent of a middle school child who was Spanish or math and I need to really just talk with that one on middle school things. But I feel like that's true. Like you said, you sense in my crazy parenting, am I only feeling crazy?
The other thing is that students of this age say to their parents, "Don't speak up, Mom. You'll make me stand out." So it took me probably endless time.
There are only a handful, and I don't say only because a handful is enough, of parents that came to us out of the middle school. So, what I'm feeling too and what I've sort of noticed is that a lot of conversations happen outside of the school and that we don't hear them. And maybe for this situation or many situations. So we always say that we're only as good as the information we're given. And if you have a complaint, there's not even gonna be action right away. But I hope that you have confidence in us that we're taking it seriously and that we're hearing you and we are taking action that we may not, you may not be able to be pretty to because it's confidential information. We're having personnel, conversations with personnel. So there's sort of a trust factor here. But also know that a large group of people did not come to us. So it's not something that we dismiss.
How many had to come? How many came? And how many did come?
Alex, maybe five or six.
Five or six. Isn't that enough?
I suspect it's enough.
It's enough, absolutely.
I mean, do you have a warning? I mean, I warned you that there was something... What on earth?
Can I, if I might? I think, I think all of us here on the board have a fairly now comprehensive understanding of the situation. And to reiterate what I said a moment ago, I would suggest that the efforts, the administration, faculty and others, as regards this situation, be focused on what needs to be done between now and the time of the end of the year, whenever this proficiency exam is given. And now I'm gonna do what I almost never do and caution others about doing as a board member. And that is to make curricular recommendations to their educational professionals and faculty here. But it does seem to me that if there is a level of anxiety about this proficiency test on the part of parents and students, that we at least go find a copy of last year's test or the one before that and look at it and see, in fact, whether or not that what the kids have now is sufficient to get them through that exam or use that as a basis of whatever coaching we're going to do between now and the end of the year to get them to that point, to allay their anxiety, to allay the parents' anxiety and to make some progress in the actual teaching of Spanish that, based on everything I've heard so far, doesn't seem to have been happening. Yes, there's a question in the back. And Ms. Nelson, wait, one second. Yes, right there.
Good evening. My name is Kristin McPherson and I'm the parent of a second grader and an eighth grader here at Garrison as well as a junior over at Hamilton. And this is also my second year as serving as P. also my second year as serving as PTA treasurer. The last time I felt compelled to make a public comment to the board was last spring in support of Principal John Griffiths. And unfortunately, tonight, I am not here in the same spirit of support and positivity. I'm here to voice my concern with the way the middle school has been staffed this year. Our middle schoolers went until January without an English teacher. Until January without an English teacher. And now, or without a Spanish teacher. And I would have come in and made a comment about the lack of teaching, but I have a kid who doesn't talk to me about what's going on. So, so I didn't. But now we don't have a Spanish teacher. And to make matters worse, the substitute teachers that have been filling these positions are unqualified. I mean, wholly unqualified. Like, to be, like, again, I don't feel like, I don't get right when specific, but there have been instances where I'm like, hmm, substitute class? But that is crazy. And, you know, I do want to know how, just how are you planning on making sure they're ready for high school and for the proficiency exam? Because they're going to be joining kids who have had consistent English instruction, and who have had consistent Spanish instruction. And that's not our kids at this point. Thank you.
I am a parent of...
I hate to...
These are my likes. So I'm back to her, and I have two kids in the eighth grade. And I agree with Kristin about the English. But I, and as an educator myself, I know how difficult it is with all the different variables and things like that. And I do feel like I have been heard. I know. But, and I feel for everybody here, I felt the same way, the same frustration. So this evening, before I left, my twin said, you know, basically it's study hall. We don't do anything. They gave us something and everything. And what popped in my head is like, I just think, listening to everybody, we got to find some solutions, like today, like this week, even though I know that you've been trying to come up with something and everything. But she's been on leave now for a while, a couple of weeks. And I know that you've been following your usual protocol, but I don't think it's working. And I really love your idea about, about looking over the past tests. You know, because what it is, is between the English and the Spanish, is that our kids are entering high school, and they're not going to be prepared at, you know. So the English teacher, she seems like she's on track with some things. And I know it's difficult to come in early years, so I'm not expecting miracles with her. But, you know, she seems proficient. The Spanish teacher, they, we got to get something like, maybe a program for the kids to, to take their, on computers or laptops, you know, Reserve Stone, or whatever it is at this rate. Because this is a big deal for them going into high school. They need to have that credit of having that space available in the program later on when they're in, when they're in high school. So, so like, that's one of the reasons why they go to Garrison, we go to Garrison, is because we do offer that Spanish regions and that accelerated math and all those things, so that they can go on. And my daughter graduated from here, and she took the Spanish proficiency, my older daughter, Megan. And so she is now in her fourth year of Spanish, and she's going to continue and take her fifth year of Spanish, continue on in whatever field she goes into. So this is like truly important that we get on the shtick today. So I mean, I thank you for what you've been doing. But I mean, right now, I think it's just Spanish control and move forward so our kids feel confident and have a knowledge base going into high school and taking this proficiency exam. Thanks.
I didn't want to stick, but I feel like I have.
Hi, I'm Karen Nelson. I have three daughters, two of whom who attend here, one who graduated, who's in 10th grade. Share similar concern with all the middle school parents regarding both English and Spanish, which may be a result of a number of factors, and I don't want to further complain about the issue. But I do want to just share some thoughts about what may be a proactive way to address this. There's clearly some breakdown in the system with the hiring process, because these are two hires that happened this year. We are a very unique school. We are a sixth or eighth school. And there's very few schools like us in the state. There's very few teachers who have to prep sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and have to prep for both of those grade levels. So for some teachers at the same salary that they would get in another district, it's not necessarily a desirable place to be, without a department chair, without a support system, without a mentor, without somebody to guide them in the proper direction. So what I would like to share with the board, that perhaps there needs to be a more unique hiring process to captivate the attention of better, more capable teachers, and also a more proactive way of mentoring them, as opposed to waiting before, waiting until there's a problem to address it. Because you're coming into a new building as a young, most of them being young or new teachers that need guidance and assistance and direction and support. And, and it appears that they're just not getting, maybe they are getting some of it, but they're not getting enough of it, and they're not getting the right amount or level of it. And I feel like I wanted to say that I forgot something. So, you know, I do also want to say that, you know, I regret not having filed some sort of grievance over the concern with Spanish, because I just thought, well, it's new, and let's figure this out. And Caroline did express a number of concerns, endless concerns, that to my fault I should have sooner addressed with the school. And maybe other parents share that same story, you know, I'm not certain. So the other thing I wanted to add is that I noticed the position was full of OLOS when I looked on there today, which I thought was a little peculiar. And it never...
Say that again, Karen.
The position yesterday was posted on OLOS, and today it wasn't. And it was never, it was never clearly defined as whether it were a full or part-time position, which I think is a really important impactful piece of information to hire a, to know, one, if you're being hired as a full or part-time position. And two, the hiring process, fulfilling a position that's a full-time position, is probably more likely to attract more attractive professional teachers. So that is something clear that needs to be discussed.
Just the reason why it disappeared from, the deadline was yesterday from the posting. So that's...
That's okay. I just, I noticed it yesterday. Tried to show it to somebody today. It wasn't there. And then, wait, one more thing. I have to remember what it was. Goodness, what was it? Sorry. I know what it was. So, so my daughter, Elizabeth, goes to Hamilton. She's in 10th grade. They've dealt, maybe you know about this, with similar challenges in the Spanish department with leave of absence and maternity leaves and illnesses, and struggled. Spanish apparently is the hardest position to fill, certification-wise. She currently has a very young vibrant math teacher teaching her Spanish class, who is a very amazing individual, who comes in every day with enthusiasm teaching Spanish.
Coming in with Spanish?
They couldn't find a qualified Spanish teacher. But they had a teacher who was a qualified certified teacher, who knew enough Spanish to teach tenth grade.
She spoke some Spanish.
Knew enough Spanish that she was able to teach the curriculum to tenth graders. So I think it's might be time to address this with a new approach that's a little bit more outside the box.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say.
I just want to say also, I think the reason why a lot of parents are quiet is because they do have trust in the administration.
It's worth considering. I don't think, though, the problems that we've heard described from all of you tonight, the issue was lack of awareness on the part of the administration or lack of notification. I think they got the message a while ago. The question is, what can they, should they have been doing about it? What can they do, given the constraints of existence within the system, the obligations of confidentiality, the obligations for coaching, for observing, for observing and not necessarily basing a decision on parent or kid reports, but seeing the behaviors themselves and documenting them, sufficient that they can take action against the individual teacher, all of which takes time. I get it. So those are, the issue was not, did anyone call this to our attention? I think it's been fairly well established that word was there.
Even that is more communication than it gotten when you're, just that, just to hear that is helpful. And then maybe someone would have said, hey, can we do some adjunct something or something in social studies where there's a Spanish person, I mean, a study hall or a Spanish person or after-school thing?
I think we get the idea.
Can I ask one question, though, on your, what you're saying? Would it be possible, in a similar situation, not, I mean, obviously not an exact situation, but somewhere where there's lack of confidence in the teacher, and you have to observe, but if they're, if you find that they're unable or disabled in their ability to teach, is there a way that an aide could, in this case, in the past test, been brought in, or in the future test, could an aide be brought in, so that you're not firing the teacher, or you're staying within protocol in New York State, or whatever, but at the same time, you've got someone that can help the transition, or can help the teacher? Is that possible?
Do you mean an aide or a mentor, or a...
It's an additional classroom presence.
Somebody that can help them.
Do you not have a mentoring system in school?
Yep, we have a mentoring system.
For all the grades?
For all new teachers.
We get the idea. Let me just say, obviously, it's good to hear this. It's good to impress upon the administration the urgency with which this needs to be dealt with. I think you've all done an excellent job of that. If there's any question on the part of the superintendent or the principal about what the board feels about it, there shouldn't be. This is, this is an urgent matter that should be dealt with as expeditiously as possible. We've heard some ideas already expressed tonight. That's good. The only thing I would say, as a board member, it is worth bearing in mind that problems like, given the, given the general level, the educational experience that our faculty across all grades deliver, which I think we all agree is, is good to excellent, to pick your own description, it is, these situations, with this particular, with this particular Spanish teacher, become conspicuous in contrast with the overall quality of the educational product to everybody else and the faculty seems to be delivering. That's observation number one. Observation number two, as board members, we have an, we have an interesting situation here where these things come to our attention in a way that they would not necessarily in a much bigger district where the board is responsible for several elementary schools, maybe two middle schools, and a high school. And those things, these kind of issues are dealt with well down below the board level. That doesn't mean we don't want to hear about them. It doesn't mean we don't, we don't impress upon the administration our own sense of urgency about them. But it is, as I said, the level of, the intensity feeling that we're hearing here, I hope is in part in a function of how conspicuous this problem is relative to the other parts of the educational experience that our faculty generally and broadly deliver.
Yes.
I'm sorry, with all due respect, part of the reason why I'm upset is because I don't feel like this is a conspicuous situation. I feel like this is a pattern of Spanish, but also in English. So when it's happening in two places, it's actually striking because it's happening in two places. I'm really disappointed with my child's eighth grade educational experience.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. Anyone else want to add? If not, yes.
I'd like to.
Let's just transition to board comment. Make this part a board comment.
May I, before, am I allowed to?
Oh, by all means, Alex. Yes.
I will not rationalize or explain why anything. We share your concerns. I apologize because your students are our students. They're our kids. I truly believe that. And I truly want to make sure that we take the steps in the immediate future to rectify it now and to salvage whatever we have left in the year. So I do apologize, and I won't explain anything.
Thank you. Jill, board member comment?
I had suggested in a meeting that we try to recruit somebody from Middlebury College, because they offer really the best foreign language programs anywhere. And I would love it if you guys could call Middlebury and find out if they have any alumni. But now I just learned that the position is not on OLOS anymore, so then I don't...
I did reach out to them though, and you...
Okay.
So, no response?
And what was the answer? No, they did not respond?
No response. But I'll follow up, absolutely, yeah.
The position is no longer on OLOS because we have, you put a deadline for filing, submitting resumes. You get a certain, you get a sufficient quantity of resumes to make a selection, or you don't, and then you repost. Is that the idea?
We just, correct me if I'm wrong, but we just reposted, and that was the set deadline. I don't recall how long it was posted, but it was for a week and a half or so. But I just, I think it just stand out because it wasn't listed. It's not necessarily quantity or what have you.
So it's, so basically, if you don't have the resumes you need, you repost. So you're going to repost.
Did you get the resumes you need, or not?
No. We received three applications in a week. And one was from Long Island, one was Queens, and one was Mandarin. So like Karen...
One of the things you have to know about OLOS postings is that there are, there are people out there who send resumes irrespective of what the requirements are for the job. So you may get, you may get 100 resumes for a teacher's job, of which only 15 or 20 are actually meet the basic requirements, so...
So I don't remember, did the community get, you know, the posts that they're looking?
We sent out with the communication that the teacher was on leave, have options, and I believe, and that we said that it was posted as a long-term substitute Spanish teacher who shared conversations about, and that's a personal matter. I don't know how much I can comment on it at this point.
Is there a way to make it more appealing? Like, say this is an emergency position, you know, a little less...
No, because I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex. If it is an emergency leave replacement, the leave replacement person does not necessarily have to be certified in that area. So it might be sufficient to get someone who speaks Spanish, but is not a certified Spanish teacher. So...
You know...
And we are, we are looking into that.
Thank you.
Which is why they did get under...
It's what, these days, everybody has to do, just to be chill. I'm sorry, interrupted.
I will add that what Steve said is very important. The business that we're in here is educating kids. And when, and I know this is a personnel matter, and personnel matters are confidential, but what I will say is that the kids are more important than a brand-new teacher who doesn't have tenure. And the educational experience of our children is why we're all here. So I also want... So I also want resolution to this, as I am a parent of a kid who is also impacted.
We'll support with you, Jill. At a year lost, yes, things take time, but a year lost is, that's a, you know, these kids are only here for a certain number of years, and that is a huge chunk of time, and that is a huge amount of time wasted. I want to support David's recommendation of looking at a record of what happened. It's not to add more work to the administration's plate. Yes, they have far too many things to do. However, clearly, something went awry here. There were many reports among the middle school. Something broke down, and I understand there's plenty of confidentiality issues that can't be discussed, but the only way to prevent this from happening again is to look at what happened and to figure out what went wrong. And then the second part is a clear path, a clear explanation of what is going to happen next. If you can't find a teacher, there needs to be a better plan. It's been, the kids have been sitting there for three weeks. So that is, sorry, stepping in as parent rather than board member, but I would hope that there's a clear plan to get us through the rest of the year, and not necessarily just with the end result of a good test score, but so that the kids don't feel that their time has been wasted.
So to change the subject, and by way of follow-up, last, last meeting, we had a conversation about the fact that Garrison School is the only school in Phillips County that doesn't have a debate club. And I'm just wondering, Laura, because I think you do have an update for us in a minute, is that all right?
I have a little bit. I just wanted to support you because I knew you were going to do some research as well, but just reached out to some colleagues at Manitou and Haldane. So Manitou, she, she said, we run an after-school club, it's a parent volunteer who coaches the team, and they meet once a week for three months, and then they get prepared for a tournament at Bard. So that's a different kind of model that they use. And then Haldane.
To our needs.
Mm-hmm. Haldane said, over the past four years, they've been building a middle school and high school club debate. The middle school meets after school, and the advisors receive a stipend, which is established between the district and the teacher contract. They learn about debate craft and then focus on preparing for the debate held at Bard in early March. And then depending on interest, they may have tryouts prior to the competitions.
They say what number of students they need to have a critical mass for a functioning club and a sustainable program?
No, I didn't ask that question, but yeah.
Because it's, it's worth noting that Haldane's, on average, their class sizes are twice what Garrison's are. Might also be worth considering, since we do, we do conjoin with them on other sports programs, like I guess lacrosse is there this year, but anyway, we share sports programs. If there was interest here, apart kids here, that have their kids participate in their program in the same way they participate with them in basketball, lacrosse, whatever the sports are, inasmuch as we would know there's at least a critical mass, there's already a stipend and professional in place, there's some durability to the program, so that's probably, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel here and beating the bushes for enough kids to make for a viable program, it might be just as easy to send them up to Haldane if there were spots there.
Do you want to know more?
Only if you decided on a course of action.
Well, I was, I was gathering information just on what the conversation was. I know that we have spoken, you've spoken about a K-8 program, and I just felt like that was not doable unless we piloted and did it a little smaller. So I'm feeling more comfortable with these conversations to see, to pilot here, that a K-8 would need full buy-in by all staff and.
Small steps.
And full, and full professional development, so.
Yeah, I just, I just thought of the K-8 idea. There is, as I told you, there's a private school in New York called Spire Legacy, which is a small school, a bidding school, which I just think it'd be worth, you know, going down there or talking to them and seeing how they do.
Yeah, absolutely, and I've always agreed with you on that. I was just, I just want to make sure that it, let's, let's see, like I guess, like you said, baby steps, whether we partner with Haldane, I think it's a great idea, whether we have a stipend, which was a generated idea last time. Is it one of our teachers? Is it a volunteer? Is it some, you know, so I think it's a great way to start and see if that will inform the future. Is it something that we want to adopt as, as a school-wide?
Could I just ask, since we, since this is by, it's widely accepted that we are the shank's end of the year. You both, you mentioned the Manitou program and the Haldane program focused on a big tournament at Bard in early March. That tournament has come and gone, these kids have gotten their rewards. Is there anything else going on, debate in either of those programs for the balance of the year, or are they wrapped?
I have a feeling that it was really in preparation, I could clarify for Bard.
So if their program is wrapped and there's no other events, competitions, or whatever, around which to organize a program for the balance of this year, then it sounds like we're talking about something for next year.
Yeah. And also I want to just add some staff, I didn't hear from all staff, but we know that there's debate happening in grades four, five, and middle school social studies. So there's some, there's a presence here in the school already.
I'm not sure that that's what David had in mind.
No, but I know it was.
It's a teacher initiatives, and I appreciate that. We have some extraordinary teachers who do that sort of thing. It's the.
Other board member comment? I've had enough to say tonight.
I have one.
Oh, yes, Jill.
If anybody has any questions for an architect, James Hardtford from River Architects down in Falls Springs, and he was going to, if anyone has any questions whatsoever about being energy efficient, please talk to this man, because he knows a very, very important conversation, and he didn't want to like run out there and interfere.
Thank you, Kristin. Jill.
So I wanted to pick up on the idea of more parent unity in the middle school, and Laura has had a bunch of talks with various people about district priorities going forward. And one of the things that I told, what's going on, and so, hear, hear, I think that's great.
Thank you, Jill. Any other board member comment? If not, thank you all very much. Now, this is, this is, this is a meeting substantially out of the ordinary, but by the same token, substantially more valuable than many of the conversations we have during public comment and board member comments. So I appreciate everybody's coming out, appreciate the sharing, the thoughtfulness, and I hope to see more of it. And with that, if there's nothing else resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Unit Free School District adjourns its March 20, 2019 board meeting. I had some move.
Some moves.
Thank you, the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Again, thank you all very much.